See ya. Good evening, all. I'd like to welcome you to this meeting this afternoon, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Byram, can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mrs. Quinter.
Here.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Thank you very much. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, Dr. Hornick, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And at this time, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Hornick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'd invite Judy Wolfre and Renee Honaker. They will come forward, and I think it'll be very important information for you all this evening. Over the past few months, all of our school sites have been represented in a Virginia Family Engagement Cohort through the Constantino Group, and we're proud to give you an update this evening. So Judy, Renee, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity for us to share some information on our work on family engagement this year. We were able to participate in the Family Engagement Cohort for Virginia Educators. We were one of 24 divisions across the state who participated. Very proud to say that all of our schools were represented in this cohort, under the leadership and guidance from Dr. Hornick. And tonight, we have representatives from each school, primarily school leaders, in one capacity or another, either an administrator or guidance counselor, who will share some of their takeaways from the cohort, as well as their plans for the upcoming year. Their work centered around five principles that were outlined by Dr. Constantino, and those are creating a culture that engages families, communicating effectively and building relationships with families, empowering families to support their students' learning at school and at home, and involving families in decision-making at school, and finally engaging the broader community in supporting our students' success in school and that of their families' involvement. So we're excited to have our school representatives here tonight to share their work. They're going to summarize their key takeaways, their plans for the future, and we're going to start with Ms. Mary Lee Grubb, who's the principal of Lightfoot Elementary, and she's going to share an update from Unionville Elementary, because Ms. Jakubek was not able to be here tonight, and Lightfoot Elementary, and then we'll progress through each of the schools, working our way from elementary through secondary.
Good evening. I'm going to start with UES for Ms. Jakubek. So this year, UES started tackling the problem of chronic absenteeism through their family engagement. This year, Unionville focused on building relationships with families through different events, like their back-to-school night, literacy night, day of service, bringing back musical performances for first and second grade. For the upcoming school year, one of the biggest, one of the biggest takeaways for Unionville was to hold parent sessions at many of the different events that they already offers was building in some more events, for the importance of the regular, of regular school attendance, building on what they started this year to increase opportunities to engage their families. At Lightfoot, we also had a very similar approach with how to engage our families. We took, we wanted to do something a little bit different, and we wanted to work on homework, and it came through one of the realizations this year of an event we had, which was our reading night. And you can see some of our pictures, I think, on the slide in a second. You'll see, too, where we had staff members, Dr. Hornick, Dr. Wolfre, and parents come and actually learn different strategies that they could do with their students at home. And we had such great feedback from that. We gave books where they could read together and games, different games that they could play at home to help with reading. And like I said, we had such great feedback. So once we got into the family engagement cohort, we started thinking one of the big takeaways from that was actually different easy things that we can do. So focusing on that, we decided we could focus on communication. How do we support relationships via different platforms, social media, email, and website to highlight some of those pieces around homework? And we hadn't taken that, it's just like I said, it's just a little bit different perspective than what we've done before. We focused on personal letters and phone calls home, specifically in the area of attendance, but when we had those conversations, how can we support you with homework for studying, for tests? And in the elementary level, really focusing in, again, on reading with your child, reading to them, listening to them read, have them read to siblings, cousins, the dog, the cat, and also how do we help, help them get back into study habits so we can be reviewing for, in third through fifth grade, a big piece is our Virginia Studies and our science. We also thought that, you know, one of the big things we started this year and going into next year is the, is the training, using same thing like with Ms. Jakubek, our reading night, our STEAM night, to actually train our families on those strategies, when we got to our STEAM night in the spring, where we could really focus in on those same pieces that we had. So, so working with that going into next year, again, just some easy things that we really learned that we can do, that will make it better. Continue to involve our families and engage them, very specifically on strategies that we know are fun, healthy strategies around homework, and to not just train our families and offer those events for our families, but also to offer very specific training for our staff members, professional development, on the importance of family involvement, and specifically in the area of homework. Thank you.
Good evening. It's nice to have the opportunity to share our reflections and our experience at Locust Grove Primary School. We identified daily school attendance and building on practices of family engagement as an avenue to raise daily attendance and continue to grow our family engagement. So we identified three takeaways, school culture and vocabulary that highlights attendance as part of a child's comprehensive school experience. We offer a really great service to our community that will shape a life. And in order to maximize exposure to daily instruction, we need our families and students to prioritize regular and disciplined school attendance. We want to take initiative in creating positive relationships on the terms of our families. We ask a lot of our families, so it's important that we show sensitivity and flexibility to the needs of our families. We need to meet our students and our families where they are, in their availability, and then invite them to participate further as they're able. And then invitations of engagement are important. It sounds simple, but in its simplicity, I think it's really powerful as well. Invitations can go a long way to send the message that parent involvement is just, isn't just important, it's necessary. Invitations of involvement welcome our families through the threshold of excellence in their child's school involvement. So there were two themes or easy ideas that emerged from this work, school culture and communication. So under school culture, as a result of this work, we are, we are going to continue to build on the practices that we have put in place, that positive school culture and family engagement. And embedded in these practices, we also want to keep the topic of regular and disciplined school attendance. Do you hear a theme? Regular and disciplined school attendance. Such an important part to build up a lifelong learner, a lifelong approach of discipline towards their schooling. We want to keep that topic of regular disciplined school attendance as part of our regular vocabulary. So when we have school events, when we're making phone calls, when we're meeting with families during PTA meetings, parent-teacher conferences, yes, we want to look at academics. That's a big and important piece of that. We want to talk about behavior, but that attendance piece is critical as well. And we have many stakeholders that we also want to highlight, that have shared valuable time and money, project excel, local businesses, parent volunteers, local nonprofits. It's important that we highlight the investment of our stakeholders who have already contributed because they see the value in the service that we provide. So thank you for your time tonight.
Good evening. I support Locust Grove Primary as well, but tonight I am presenting for Locust Grove Elementary. Some of the practices that we implemented this year and that we saw from the cohort, already, it kind of confirmed what we were doing, as well as gave us some additional takeaways from, from what we were able to learn from this. Some of the practices that we had in place were offering PTA meetings both in-person and virtually, which allowed us to increase our attendance at those meetings for families who couldn't physically come out. We also did monthly perfect attendance and Eagle of the Month certificates to acknowledge our students who were able to achieve both of those elements. We also increased student programs to support student belonging. We had a student ambassador program this year that involved giving students jobs throughout the building and just increasing their role within the building, which supported their attendance. They wanted to come to school because they had a purpose. And of course, their purpose is academics and to learn, but it just increased their excitement to be there in the building, and they felt very much more a part of the school. So that was very successful, and through this cohort, we were able to see that those practices did support what we were trying to accomplish. Additional takeaways that we did learn from this, that, that we'd like to continue to kind of work through for the next school year, is an increase in the two-way family communication. So for instance, you know, we invite parents to parent-teacher conference. We confirm the time that they arrive and when their appointment is, but offering them the opportunity to say, what would you like to talk about? You know, we have an agenda of things we'd like to talk about, but just giving them that opportunity to respond back to us. Also, additional training for families to access the parent portal so that they have access to their students' grades and achievement and successes throughout the year, in addition to regular report card time and interim reports. We also realized through this cohort, just a better understanding of knowing the family communication preferences. So when we do provide opportunities for family involvement, we make sure that everyone is able to receive that message, and they're fully informed about what's going on in the school. Some ideas to better engage families, based on what we just talked about, are to offer tutorial sessions for parent portal and Canvas during some of our engagement events. So actually providing that opportunity when they're already there through other events, and even incentivizing that a little bit. We have Bird Box that the kids love in our school, and so coordinating some of that and putting that together with, with parent involvement, we hope will help. And then continuing to do an outreach for families that don't sign up for conferences, again, being more proactive with our communication with, with families who speak Spanish, and making sure that we're communicating with them with their preference of, of language. And then utilizing data to make sure that that information that we are getting out is actually reaching the families. So one thing that we talked about as a result of this cohort is the possibility of holding a celebration night of the diverse families in the Locust Grove Elementary School community that include music, dance, food, and dress, possibly during Hispanic Heritage Month. We also want our PTA activities to be better communicated with families to allow more representation during that time. Going back to parent-teacher conferences, being able to provide a summary for parents of what will be discussed at that parent-teacher conference, and provide the parent an opportunity to have feedback on that as well. So that goes along with that two-way communication. Providing a process for parent requested support and information from the school counselor's webpage. We'd like to be able to utilize that webpage a little bit more. We've talked about even having a QR code on that webpage where parents can interact with the information that's there, and if they see something that they'd like to have support in, they could respond to us that way. So we basically want to continue to build on a lot of the positive practices that we already have in place to celebrate students, but to build a stronger community and stronger sense of community within the school.
Good evening. So this cohort was an incredible opportunity. There was a lot of things that was just thrown at us. But a lot of the things we do at Orange Elementary very well, but there's still some things that we can improve on. And one of the things we talked about improving is our communication with our families. So this year, we worked on, we wanted to make positive phone calls home within the first two weeks to start developing that relationship between teacher and student, but also staff. Another thing that we instituted this year was good behavior notes. So we have a behavior recognition system that goes weekly, but we wanted something more immediate for the teachers and staff to have access to. So they were able to send those good behavior notes home more frequently. In the cohort, one of the things they talked about was your signage coming off the street. And so we've been looking at our signs, and because we have a higher ELL population, how many of our signs are in Spanish? Or when you walk into our vestibule, are we saying we have a translator available? And the answer is, we have one sign, and we don't have anything that says that we have a translator available. So that's one thing we're working on having as soon as we come in, is that we have translators available via language line, just so our parents are aware of that. On the types of communication engagement impact, according to Dr. Constantino, a few of the higher ones were efficacy-based activities, interactive homework, home visits, family academic socialization, and home learning support. So we're going to try to incorporate more of those going into the next year, to see if we can increase that engagement. Like the other schools, we are focused on our attendance, but it starts with the engagement piece. If students and families are engaged, they're going to want to be in school more. So one of the things we did was, we're trying to revamp our PTO after COVID. A lot of our volunteers had gone away, either to find another job, or they were just staying away. So with the revamped PTO, we offered childcare through the National Honor Society, students coming to watch students during the meetings, and it was great because the parents felt relieved that they didn't have to watch their child during the meeting, but they were also in safe hands. And so while having the PTO revamped, we also offered them the opportunity to come in and volunteer throughout the day, and we instituted a nine-week incentive. If you want to see parent engagement, they came in and played dodgeball with their kids, and they had a blast. It was a great time. So when we encouraged and invited the extended members to the family, more people came. And so our ELL teachers put on a fantastic game night to start those conversations and communication with families, and we easily had, I want to say over 60 in attendance for a two-hour game night. Another thing we started doing is alternating the time of events, and so our students have a tough time coming back after school later at night, and so that's why the ELL game night was right after school. So the teachers kept them until the parents could arrive, and I think that was a big contributor to that. Another thing we started offering was some virtual opportunities. So for our graduation this year, we actually streamed it, since we, or promotion, sorry, for our fifth graders, we streamed it live, and we had over 60 families tune in to watch their students during promotion, which was amazing. So the new ideas, like I said, we're going to continue to offer clubs and after-school activities for our families. These are just some of the ones we've done, the positive phone call or postcard home within those first two weeks, just to build that relationship base. Like I said, we want to have signage that represents our families at Orange Elementary School. The incentive for attendance and behavior is something that the students can engage in, but like I said, families can come in and help with it also. And then the last one is, we have to reflect on what we've done. Like I said, we have done a lot of things well, but we can still continue to improve moving forward. So I'm excited to see what we do next year. Having as many families come in and support our students just makes our school a better place.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about family engagement. Some key takeaways, and mine, when I'm going to, I have an interesting perspective as, as I was going through this, because I'm both a fan, and many of us are the same. I'm a parent at the school as well as a, the principal of the school. So I have kind of, I've experienced some of the things that the author was describing, and I tried to take that lens. And one of the things I've always found as a parent is, it can be very challenging to access the information I want when I want it at that moment. And so I think a major part of what we will do at Gordon Barber moving forward is putting that information in parents' hands quickly ahead of time, as opposed to a reactionary step, being much more proactive with it. So I'll get, I'm going to skip to number two there. The efficacious family is what that refers to. A family is efficacious if they know where to find the information they need, if they believe in their ability to help their child, and they believe that they have the information they need. So we will ask classroom teachers to be really uniform in pushing information out to their families, to make sure they know when test dates are, what assignments are coming up, what are the key ideas and vocabularies that they can talk about with their children. In that way, we will empower parents to take a more active role in their child's education. As, after all, that says it's not just what they're studying, how they learned it, and all those things. Within the school environment, warming up the school environment, we can go a ways, and one of the things that the author recommended that is very powerful is the warm transfer. So when a family calls in, the secretary picks up the phone, takes the message, transfers them off to somebody, and the person has to re-explain the whole situation again and go through, and then maybe to a third person. So the warm transfer is something I'll go through with my secretaries and staff, is how to do the transfer. You can keep the person on the line, hi, this is John so-and-so, he's calling about his child. And you warm them up so that they don't have to explain their issue again, and the person that's receiving the call is in a better position to help. The 10-second rule is a challenge I'll also offer my secretary, staff, my administrative assistants, which is to not allow somebody to stand un greeted for 10 seconds or more. So even if they're in the middle of something, they can stop and greet them and say, I'll be with you in just a moment. And then finally, under that is the administrator check-ins. So one of the things the author recommends, and he points out, is that we oftentimes make phone calls throughout the week, and we don't follow up. So as a principal, going through some of those unsolved, or what we think are resolved issues, circling back around them to call the parent and say, was that situation resolved? I just wanted to see how that was handled. And I think as an administrator, that will go a long way to building trust with parents, hearing that follow-through. I didn't just hear it that day, but three days later, I'm still thinking about it, and I heard your concern. The transparent school model is, goes along with the efficacious family as well, and we can scroll down to the, to the bottom, to the next slide, and I'll show you what that is. All right. So the transparent school model, as I said, the communication empowers family to support their child's learning. One of the things you can do with that is you can give sentence starters to parents to talk to their children about what they learned in school that day. Today, we learned about, please have Anna tell you about it, and write what she said below. So moving from just the signature, I checked it off, to actually having something to talk with your child about. As I mentioned before, improvements in basic customer service, and then the two-way communication, administering parent surveys. I did, I administered a parent survey my first year at Gordon Barber. I haven't done so. We gave a lot of surveys about transportation, about learning models, about this and that. It's been a while since we've asked, how's it going? So I think moving forward, and to the next year, we're going to survey families about their experience and see what ideas for improvement they have. Our parent-teacher organization, as Orange Elementary was describing, parent-teacher organizations took a major hit during COVID because of the lack of in-person meetings, and then as those in-person meetings were, one of the children were aging out. And so that left a lot of our organizations with a skeletal framework. So perfect time to rebuild it, to set, we're going to gather the parent-teacher organization, and kind of like the model that the county went through, do that with the parent-teacher organization. What is our vision for our organization right now, and what action steps are we going to take to improve it? And then finally, also going along with what Orange Elementary was saying, and I loved your dodgeball idea, but identifying every opportunity that we can for, to have volunteers assist, and then seizing those opportunities. Oftentimes, we, we have parent engagement on our terms, where we say, you can come in and do this, but you can't do that. You can't observe the classroom, but you can walk along here, this or that. True engagement is offering, is finding those opportunities to bring the parents in. So we're going to find some volunteer opportunities, you know, partner readings, that sort of thing, to have parents come in and actually take advantage of the volunteers that we have on file. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marlene Rombach. I am the assistant principal over at Locust Grove Middle School, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to be part of this program. It affirmed a lot of things that we're doing, and it kind of opened up lots of opportunities for things that we could do in the future. To start with, some of the pretty big takeaways that we took. Number one, probably one that was most significant to me, was most of the engagement that impacts student learning actually happens in the home. And what does that mean? That means holding the student accountable. That means, hey, did you do your homework? Did you study for your test? So that one was a big one, and this will kind of all wrap back around. Number two was, people will engage to the extent that they feel competent. Number three was how welcoming the building are, what does the signage look like? And number four, making those connecting to family culture and experience. And the palm of practice, and I may have gotten a little too specific on this one, but come mid-third, nine weeks, we took a look at our academic success of our students, and we saw that about one in five students were not passing at least one content area, and we saw that almost one in 10 students were not passing three to four different content areas. So that was a pretty, that was pretty significant for us. And what we found, it was also really challenging to get parents to regularly assist with bringing them in for parent meetings, checking on Power School, and checking on classroom assignments. So those were some of the challenges we faced, along with some of the takeaways. So that kind of brings us, so that, with that challenge in mind, number one thing, when we did our parent meetings, we would bring them in, meet with administrators, and one of the big things that we found was, parents really struggled in understanding, especially at the secondary level, what our grading scale was, the different categories. They weren't on Canvas enough, or they didn't really understand how to navigate Canvas, and a lot of our meetings were spent trying to instruct parents how they can, how they can really be empowered and really help their student at home. So the first thing, as far as plans for next year, is to almost hold like a parent university, and what that would look like in the very beginning of the year, to have parent information where we talk to them about how to use Canvas. What are the tricks and tips for using Canvas? How do they use, you know, when no one's assignment is turned in? How do they know how to look up a grade, types of things like that? What about Power School? Do they know how to use the settings that they're alerted when a new grade comes in, and ways that they can really help organize their, their students? So especially middle school-level organization could be a challenge. So really focusing on how parents can be empowered into helping their student at home. The second one is also in the beginning of the year, is that teachers are to reach out with a personal phone call to every family and welcome, let them know that they're excited to have their student in their class. And so that would be within the first month of school. One of the other ones, things that I mentioned earlier, is the, not all parents are on Canvas, they're not all checking it regularly. So for the teachers to create more of a weekly or bi-weekly newsletter that goes out to parents with what information they need to know. Because most of the time, parents want to know, when's the test, what assignments to do, what grades, what do I need to know to help my student? And so not just relying on them to go in and check Canvas and go through six different classes, but to actually give them like a weekly newsletter with kind of everything all in one place. The next piece is conducting partnership meetings, and we did this this year. But I think they need to be done a little sooner and, and more robustly, where we, we sit down with students that are struggling with an administrator, with the teacher, with the student, and come up with a plan. If that student is struggling, what do they need to do? Do they need to participate in after-school tutoring? What are the plans that we can work with the family to help their student be more successful? Also, parent information sessions, I mentioned, do it in the beginning of the year, but we can also target them throughout the year of the students that are struggling. Pull the list through Power School, and then keep engaging those parents. How can they help their student? How can they organize their child? Do they know how to use Power School? Do they know how to use Canvas? So as opposed to just being a one-time thing, that this would happen throughout the year. Hosting of families, some family game night to help really build relationships. It's not quite dodgeball, but bingo is fun, too. A lot of us, it's easy to play. And then teachers, to make sure those students that the teachers really need to see, to make sure that they're personally reaching out to those families to draw them in. So all of these strategies basically are about empowering the family, empowering the parents, and then also building the relationships. Thank you.
Got my handy-dandy phone. All right, good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here in place of my principal, Renee Burke. My name is Vanessa Ward. I'm the school counselor with Prospect Heights Middle School. And thank you for the opportunity to participate in the family engagement cohort. From that meeting, the following, the following really stuck with us. Meeting families where they are, ways to effectively communicate, welcome and partner with them in their child's education. What role does communication play in the success of a student? We, there's a staff activity actually in the book that talks about, what is it like? How often do you communicate with parents? What did you guys communicate about? Did the parent contact you, or did you contact the parent? So we want to make sure that we're getting our staff members, our teachers and, and staff, to, to be proactive and be in the first ones to communicate. And letting, letting the parents, or guardians, or special people who are raising our amazing kids know what's really going on with their children. Family engagement and communication is not about doing more, but doing it well differently. And at the onset of the family engagement cohort, we looked at data with the hope to improve SOL and MAP scores within a certain population. It was noted that there was an achievement gap in math and English for students with disabilities. We then pulled data from parent-teacher conferences held throughout the school year and found that although students with disabilities are twenty percent of Prospect's student population, only, only eleven percent parent-teacher conferences were held with the parents of a student with a disability. From there, we developed our goals and action plan. The goals is that we will form relationships with our families of students with disabilities. The focus will be in educating parents on how they can assist their child with the academic expectation in middle school, and how we can create an open line of communication. And we would also like to increase parent-teacher conference and IEP 504 meeting attendance. We, we're working on, or we have worked on, transition plans for incoming sixth graders and families, students and families. So we've actually contacted every elementary school that feeds into Prospect. So Lightfoot, Gordon Barber, and OES. We have met with the fam, with met, with some of the families that have a student that has an IEP or 504, just to introduce ourselves, let them know that we are available to meet during the summertime, should they want to come in and meet with us during that time for a tour, or just more, you know, to gather more information. Also let them know of our sixth grade, sixth grade orientation night, so that they are already aware and have it on their calendars, that if they choose not to take advantage of a tour during the summer, that would then be their opportunity to do so. We will be doing home visits at the beginning of the school year to visit and welcome families. That'll be during pre-service week. We will, we're looking into, well, we want to create an effective two-way communication practice. Most of our families prefer texting. So we are looking into ways, whether it's Google Voice, or, or some other platform, to be able to communicate with our parents. Because they would much rather talk, I mean, text than to have us call them or even set up a meeting. Create system of measurement and communicating with families. So like our parent-teacher conference, actually having that data to determine how we're communicating with families, what was most effective, how often are we, are we reaching out to families? And teacher-staff development on best practice in classrooms that serve students with disabilities in the area of math and English. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Weber. I'm school counselor at Orange County High School. It's my honor to be here to represent what Mr. Paul Mary, our principal, and myself, we experienced with being part of this cohort. I'll just kind of say that, just, just lead off, as many of you know, as always, high school's a little bit of a different ball of wax. We have parents coming in with, with a decade, in the most part, with being engaged or not being engaged with, with their school's trust. It's, it's hard to build. But the flip side of that is if we have trust when they come in, with a lot of them, we don't have to work that hard to keep it, as long as we're doing what we know they need. So really, what we wanted our focus was to be is that, how, how do we pull people who have spent a decade not being engaged? It might be for good, bad reasons, whatever it is, they haven't been engaged, it doesn't really matter why. Well, how can we pull them and to be more engaged with the high school? And really what we wanted to focus in on was something that, something they've never seen before, which is that their son or daughter is going to be leaving Orange County public schools in a few years, and is going to be going out into the real world doing their thing. So we figured that would be a good way for us to try to not only retain the engagement that we've had with, with parents for the last decade, but also to draw in some new, to draw in some new folks to us. So, and I'll kind of let you guys read some of the stuff, some of the thoughts that Mr. Paul Mary had. And I'll just kind of let you know kind of how, how that's going to go into practice. First of all, we're, we're going with, with a ten amount that, that our parents, they, they know their kids best. We, we want to lean on that a little bit more than we have in the past, make sure that it's, we're building trust on them being experts on their own kids, and having it not sound like it's just something that we're saying, it's something that we, we, we mean. We really want to know what they think what's best for their kids before we really even form an opinion. So that we're building what we like to call like quality of relationships instead of quantity of relationships. We want our numbers of parents to be involved with our various events, obviously, to go up. But we certainly want word to spread that it's worth coming to. And we believe that even if we reach a smaller group at first, and word starts to spread that, that there's quality things going on at the high school, we'll be, we'll be in a good place. One other thing that we wanted to look at was leaning more into our ELL teachers to help us out with some of our events, and helping out with some of our students. And one, one great thing that we've been able to do is we've been able to interview, and I believe recommend for employment, is a school counselor who's bilingual for next year at the high school. So we're very excited about being able to have someone in our, in our department who can step up to the plate and, and help serve. Some of our underserved students are, are students of color. We want to reach out to them, obviously, get, get those parents involved. Just having some diversity in the department is something that we're looking forward to as well. Mr. Paul Mary's instituted an advisory block for next school year, which is going to allow us to draw some of our students, some of our teachers into, into these types of conversations that like they never have before, or at least in probably fifteen years, since we had something similar at the high school when I first started here. And we're going back into this. So it's going to give the students an opportunity to have a teacher that, almost all of the students will have a teacher that they do not have throughout the school day, that they'll be able to spend fifteen, twenty minutes with, depending on how long that advisory block goes, just so that they can have conversations without having to also say, oh, by the way, I didn't do my homework last night. That isn't something that they have to really worry about with that adult. So it gives them somebody they can talk to, not just their school counselor, but someone who, that they can reach out to, and that those parents can, can say, maybe I will need to talk to this teacher, because it's not about your grades, it's about what are they, what am I seeing on a day-to-day basis from, from, from my child? What are you seeing? So we're really excited about being able to do that. And we also want to include more of our teachers in our college planning, financial aid planning nights, so that the administration, teachers, and councils are all working together as a team to, to ensure that our, our families are feeling like they're being served. One thing that we did, because we are having a slight change to our master schedule this year, as we are more, earlier than we ever have, we've had a parent night at the high school, Mr. Paul Mary did, to explain what the master schedule is going to look like for ninth graders, as well as ten through twelfth graders. And that really, doing that very early in the, in the second semester, gave us the opportunity to explain what was going on without having it be, you're going to pick your classes tonight, too, because that was important for, because when you know you're going to be doing that, that's the only thing that's on those kids' minds, it's the only things on those parents' minds. So it was simply, here's what the master schedule is going to look like, and then giving an opportunity for parents to ask questions. And then there was actually a small parent committee that was put together to, to follow up with any questions that they had from Mr. Paul Mary as well. So we did that, and we had administrators and students go over to the middle school when, when it was time to get ready to select classes, just to talk about their experiences. And, and there were several middle school parents that were involved with being able to attend that as well. So we, we're really excited about the opportunities we have to, to engage parents. Our biggest thing that, that Mr. Paul Mary and I have always talked about through this, being part of this cohort, was we just don't want numbers, it's about getting quality of numbers. We don't want to just check off boxes, we want parents to feel engaged. And that's why we focused not only on what is very important, college and career readiness is super important, but also that's something that, that parents that haven't been engaged with, that's something new that we'd be able to draw them into. So we're really excited about that opportunity. Thank you.
So as you can see, this was a very valuable experience for all of our schools, and it's, it, it has a lot to do with what we do every day, and one of the most important things that we have. I just wanted to leave you with the five simple principles logic model, which was a big part of this. Just so you can see that it talks about those different things that we can do, that he calls them simple principles, and maybe they are simple, but as you can see, there are a lot of action steps that are needed to really make them happen. So having a culture that engages every family, communicating effectively and building relationships, empowering every family, engaging every family in decision-making, and engaging the greater community. And I think you saw an example of all of those elements in, in the principal's presentation. So if you have any questions for any of the principals, they're here. And we appreciate the opportunity that you allowed us to have this time with our peers across the state of Virginia. There were other schools involved in this, and we just really appreciate your support in that. Thank you.
Judy Renee, thank you for your leadership, and to all of our presenters tonight, thank you for painting a really strong picture about what you've learned and what you hope to accomplish. And this, of course, is a large component of the draft strategic plan that we are looking forward to bring. We're planning to bring it June 5th. And there, there's an entire section based on family engagement and outreach and stakeholder engagement. And so this, this work ties right in. So I'd like to thank you all, and if there's any questions or comments from board members, and if not, I will move forward.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. But with that, madam chair, members of the board, our next port of call here is letter B. And these are the proposed policy revisions that we brought forward May 1st. And we went back in JCA and did try to make the definition, so to speak, of a, of a closed school, which is closed to a transfer, more accessible and more clear-cut. So the strike-throughs that you see is, that information is still in the policy. It is now in a, in a section where we essentially define what a school that is closed for transfers is. And so we're available for any questions you all may have. Again, these are the ones from two, two weeks back.
So this is an action item tonight.
Yes, please.
I entertain a motion, please.
I move to adopt draft CBA, draft OCPS Child Care Verification Form JCA F2, draft JCB, draft OCPS Form JCA F1, draft JEC RF2, and JCA updated draft as presented for policy revisions.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second? I'll second. Any questions? All right. There are no questions? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. We will move forward with Mr. Honnaker and supplemental appropriations. Gary?
Good afternoon. I'm here to request a supplement appropriation to the Food Service Fund, one million seventy-five thousand and fifty dollars. This amount is comprised of federal, state, and local funds. Any questions from anyone? Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Blair, supervisor of school nutrition, to come forward. And I believe you have maybe the next couple here in line? Linda, is that correct? D, E, and F for sure, correct? So.
Correct, yes, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Good evening. We're here to talk about the renewal of our dairy, bakery, and produce contracts to provide food to our schools. And we did put out RFPs for these to see who wanted to serve us, and we received one from each. And it was the ones that we've been using over the years, and we're very pleased with, so I'm very happy with this. Any questions?
No, I entertain a motion. You can have a second? I'll second. Thank you. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. At this time, I'd invite Mr. Sarver to come forward with a request for surplus property from transportation, followed by Mr. Hill, surplus property for technology.
We've got one before that, Dr. Horn. Gasoline and diesel.
And bulk gasoline. Thank you, Justin, sorry about that.
No problem, there's a lot of items in that list.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. This evening, I'm asking for approval to enter the state motor fuel program. To give you a little explanation, the state motor fuel program is a consortium. It's basically any agency within the state, plus a number of different school divisions and local governments. Gives it a lot better buying power and more, more competitive contracts. Excuse me. When we put this out to bid, we actually did not get any responses, which was very unusual, considering that Quarles has had our business for the better part of twenty-five years. But when we submitted their, submitted the invitation to them, we received no response. If you recall, back in the winter, we were issued a revised contract with them that drove our prices up quite a bit. This contract is thirty-six cents per gallon cheaper, so that's my recommendation. And it should be a fairly smooth process, it will be serviced by Mansfield Oil.
Are there any questions of Mr. Sarver? Is it, it's a yearly contract as well?
Yes, and we can, if we decide that we are dissatisfied, we can opt out at any time.
Sounds like a no-brainer then, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay. If everyone is comfortable, I will entertain a motion on this.
I move to approve the recommendation that Orange County Public Schools enter into the State of Virginia Fuel Program administered by the Department of General Services.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Justin.
The second item is, I'm looking for recommend, approval of declaration of surplus property of three sedans. Two are due to their age and their condition. The third recently was involved with a collision. It's had kind of a colorful life with us, and this is the last, unfortunately, the last incident. It does not necessarily need to be repaired and continue its use with students. They'll be either sold or used as trade credits for future purchases.
Thank you. Again, soon as we approve this, you can get them out there on the market. So...
It's amazing you can get 14 years on a Chevy Impala.
Amen to that.
If you're interested in seeing what 14 years looks like on a Chevy Impala, I'm happy to show it to you.
I'll see if I can. I'll make the motion to be settled.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Justin. Greg, surplus property for disposal from technology.
Again, this is a list of items that we have that are either obsolete or are no longer in service. The biggest, one of those is those Cisco network equipment towards the bottom there. That was part of our old phone system. We're hoping to get a good return on that. And some of the other items are broken further down. But as you can see, Windows 7, Windows 8, we're now on Windows 11. So these are items that are, you know, as I said, obsolete or are broken. So we're trying to get some return on them as we can.
Okay. All right. Again, is everyone comfortable with approving this?
I move to approve the request to declare this equipment a surplus property for disposal.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, I believe it is Mr. Arnold has a recommendation for our propane supply for the upcoming school year, correct, Doug?
That is correct. Thank you, Dr. Hornet.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Madam Chairman, this is our final renewal for the current contract for the propane supply. And it is, the contract is with Blossom Gas. And we recommend that the approval be given for this contract. They've given good service. In some years, we've been able to lock in the price. That did not happen this past year, but they still didn't get carried away with price increases. But we always have that option. And this contract will be required to go out to bid in April or May of next year. So this is the final renewal of the current contract. Maybe talking to Mr. Sarver in a year about maybe adding propane to the state contract, but we'll see where that goes. Meanwhile, any questions or comments from the board?
Stain it, we do it every year. So I'll ask, is everyone comfortable with this? Or...
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the final one-year extension of the Division's propane supply contract with Blossom Gas for the period of July 1, 2023 through June 30 of 2024.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And Doug, I know you will stay on here to give us an update about projects and other things in facilities and maintenance.
Yes, indeed. And the bulk of the items on the list this time around are from spring break. We got a lot done in a week. But of course, we'll start with Gordon Barber, where the project is ongoing. And some of the items that have been completed in the last two months include metal studs, door frames, exterior sheeting, electrical and plumbing rough ends, and ductwork installation. They are still working on drywall, roofing, window frames, and glass. And they also removed the door and frame entering the existing buildings. And so they have installed a temporary wall there until they can open it up. But they had to remove the existing door so they could finish a firewall between the two buildings. Laura has some slides of these projects, so we'll go ahead and hit the exterior and interior of Gordon Barber. I can see the brick is completed and been washed. Windows and frames are installed on the outside. And you can just see a, oops, a little peek of what the roof will look like. That is the upper roof over the mechanical area. The entire roof will be that color, it'll be metal. So no more flat rubber roofs, no more leaks. And the intention is to put the same type of roof on the existing building next year. There's the interior. You can see about maybe 50% of the sheetrock has been hung. Framing for the ceilings is installed, ductwork, electrical, mechanical, rough ends, plumbing. So that's it for Gordon Barber. Onto Hornet Sports Center. We have completed a retaining wall to finally fix the erosion problem in the front of the building on either side of the stairs. And so I encourage everybody that hasn't already seen it to go over there and have a look. It turned out really nice. I have a photo of that work in progress. Note that we also put sod on the upper side as well as the rock right above the wall to filter out any water and prevent the mud factor you see at the bottom. Also, at the Field House, we painted the railings, the exterior doors, and the structural steel beams that were beginning to rust. And the third project at Hornet Sports Center and to the Voag Building, we paved a connector between the side parking lot of the Field House and the parking lot of the Voag. And, yeah, there you go. So now the student traffic can come down through there off of Route 20, and they don't have to go through the circle in the morning to get to their parking area. So it alleviates some of the traffic.
On Selma, yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And into the front of the school. Ultimately, we hope to make it two-way and connect the whole thing, preferably through the Voag Building, but that's down the road. We also put in a new sidewalk to keep the student foot traffic off of the new roadway and keep it along next to the Field House and up toward the Voag, I mean the JROTC building. Okay, onto Prospect Heights. We have replaced the windows in the cafeteria, which were the worst of the bunch. They ultimately all will need replacement. Unfortunately, it's a poor design. And we have the same situation at Locust Grove Elementary. But got these done. They look great, and it complements well with the stucco work we did a couple years ago. No more bird stains, no more windows that won't close all the way. And they also have the vents at the bottom where you can still open them up and get some fresh air if need be. Onto Locust Grove Middle School. We installed new lettering on the gym wall and above the main entrance. We actually had the big letters for the gym wall. They were found in a storage area at the school that only had an exterior door that very few people had been in. And I'm like, well, let's put them up. We had to buy one letter. Somebody lost one in that 11-year period. But they're up now. And we also put smaller letters along the front of the school. So if you pull in the front there, you will see which school it is. To Porterfield Park, we have had a sign on the Montavista Boulevard side of Porterfield Park that was previously done using just peel-off plastic lettering, and they had literally been peeling off. So we got a more permanent side made it put up there. Also, this missed the cut as far as the text, but we were able to take the old damaged scoreboard out at the other end of the field, move the pink temporary scoreboard over to Prospect Heights where it will be painted and put up permanently there in place of the older one. So that's what it looked like. And we also took out a whole bunch of stumps. There's the pink scoreboard that will be repainted. It's otherwise in good shape, other than the faded paint. And we also tore out a whole bunch of big stumps back there from when we had that storm and the trees broke off. The town cut the trees down about this tall, left the stump. So they're gone, too. Looks a lot better back there. Last but not least, Unionville. We did another round of radiator and asbestos paper removal in the remaining hallways, offices, and restrooms, and painted where the radiators were. So that takes care of all of those things, except there's like one set left in the kitchen. We'll do that hopefully in July. That's all I've got for now. Stay tuned for more as the summer projects get going. They're underway. Sorry, Sherry.
It's okay.
It'll be worth it. Yes, Michael?
The scoreboard, the replacement scoreboard is at Prospect, and is that going to be installed at Prospect? And then the new one's going to be installed at...
At Porterfield Park, yes, sir. Yeah, that's been ordered.
I have a question about something. We haven't talked about it. Locust Grove Middle School, out by the highway, not 20, but what is it, 601, Flat Run Road?
Flat Run Road, yes, sir.
We have trees along there, and we've had four or five that's fallen down. They were out toward the road. Somebody's pushed them back toward the woods. My question is, is that the school's responsibility, the county's responsibility? Even though they're sort of out of the way?
Yeah.
I prefer dead trees that are right out visibly laying on the ground to be removed.
I agree with you there. I believe that's VDOT, but I will investigate and make sure, find out where the property line is between us and them. Because we've taken quite a few trees off from the bus loop side of that crop of trees, but we haven't touched these.
I don't think that is, I mean, that's, I think it's county property. I don't know who's going to take care of it, but I think it needs to be...
Well, if it's ours, we'll get it taken care of. If it's VDOT, I'll harass them. Either way, we'll deal with it. Thank you for letting us know. All right. Anything else? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Doug. And at this time, we will bring forward to you a first read of some policy revisions. And we'll start at the top with the minutes. I believe this is just a, an update to a legal reference. The next one, as far as valuation of superintendent, is a policy dropped to put the evaluation system in line with new requirements from House Bill 1904 and Senate Bill 1196. Capitalization of fixed assets. Gary, if you did anything you wanted to speak to here, but I know that this move was to put us in line with the county and how they handle the policy for capitalization of fixed assets.
And there was also a recommendation from the auditors that we...
And also a recommendation from the auditors that we follow suit. Okay, copy that. Thank you. The next two are the student and staff acceptable computer use systems. And I believe this was tied primarily, Greg, to a legal reference update, correct, as well as some other language enhancements?
Adding some additional technologies that have come about since the last policy.
And adding some additional technologies that we are now, we now live with on our day-to-day basis that were not when the previous policy was written. The next two, we've put a lot of time into to address the homework and the grading policy. And Judy and Renee are here to provide any insight or answer any questions for homework and grading. Homework, we wanted to be, we felt that it was too constrictive, and needed to provide a little bit more banks on the river without being too down into the weeds, which is where this policy was, and understandably, because I think this was originally crafted, is this the one that was kind of during COVID? This is pre? Okay. And in the grading policy, one of the things that we identified, as well as with a number of folks who worked on these committees with us, is we operate on a 10-point scale and have been, except for our lower-performing students. And so in addition to adding some information about teacher grade books and when they should be updated, as well as elementary grade books, et cetera, and interim reports, a recommendation to you to work and operate on a true 10-point grading scale. And then the final one is one that we also put quite a bit of work into, as well as getting advice from both our division council, as well as our, well, Jason Ballam from the special education side. And this provides some information and some clarification to an existing policy. So this is an enhancement to current policy, JEC. And the bulk of the information that we recommend adding is at a section towards the bottom with the admission of non-resident OC, non-resident students in Orange County Public Schools. And so these are being brought forward to you for a first read. And of course, we'll be available for any questions or thoughts between now and the 5th, when we will seek action on these particular policies. Okay, move on?
Yep.
Okay. In the next section, this is also just for the board's edification and to start to consider this information. Last week, superintendents received the following email from our new state superintendent of public instruction, which is tied to, I would call it a, an initiative from state leadership to enhance access to tutoring. This platform, through the K-12 Learning Acceleration Grants, is, provides, is open to all families across the Commonwealth. And you see in the line that has been repeated to us is the last sentence in the first paragraph, I guess, so to speak. Our Virginia teachers are the best tutors for our students. And so this platform and this program allows teachers across the Commonwealth to essentially become an employee of and on the Class Wallet platform, and set their hourly rates, and also decide how they would schedule tutoring sessions, as you can see in the second, in the third paragraph, in-person, virtual, hybrid, one-on-one, et cetera, and essentially get paid via Class Wallet from the money that parents put into and pay the program, and then the teachers are paid through there. There's also program grants to, and you can see the criteria at the bottom, where families in need can seek grant funding and apply for $1,500 of grants for their school-aged children to help cover the cost. And so part of this is a parent component as well. The reason that we bring this forward to you is that I suspect a, quite a number of school divisions across the Commonwealth are going to have to decide how to make this program and support this program, yet also make sure that we're not setting teachers up to violate school board policy. And so Laura, if you could go to, let's start with GCQAB. As this came about, and we had a webinar on this last week, late last week, I worked through and identified a few policies that could potentially get us hung up here. First one is GCQAB. And this is a policy that... And this is a policy that basically says one sentence, "Staff members may not be paid by anyone other than us for tutoring students enrolled in a class under their direction." And Laura, if you could also go to policy EDC. A line in this policy at the end here where employees are prohibited from utilizing school property for personal use or personal gain. And Laura, if you go to GAB, please. I will not read this whole thing to you. This is one of the ones that was brought forward with some language enhancements. But to summarize in here, essentially, school division technology under the acceptable use agreement is supposed to be used for school business. And so as we look at wanting to make sure that we support the program and making sure that students, particularly in Orange County, have access to the best possible tutors, it seems to me that there's a continuum. And again, this is not for action tonight. This is more to just kind of wrap your heads around what we've been looking at here. On a continuum from, I guess, most restrictive to least restrictive. On the most restrictive end, we essentially don't change any of the policies in place. And should a student who is in a class with a teacher signs up to be tutored by that teacher via class wallet, the teacher would have to not accept that engagement, and the student would have to find a different teacher to tutor them. The middle ground, I guess, so to speak, would be to build in an exemption right now for this particular state kind of driven, state-backed initiative, where there would be flexibility given for as long as this program will be in place. From everything that I have seen, it seems that this is a, this is a stopgap measure that the, that the state is looking to put into place to help address learning loss in COVID. I suspect it might be extra funds, et cetera, that might be used. I don't know that this is going to be around forever. And so it might require a change down the line, but that would, that's kind of the middle road. Or of course, the least restrictive is we change these and allow any teacher to tutor any student at any time, regardless if they are under their direct stead in the classroom or not. And so I just wanted the board to be aware, as this comes out, many, many, many school divisions will be wrestling with this particular question. Of course, I will work with Division Council as well. Unfortunately, he works with a number of other school boards, so he will, he will have some ideas as far as what other divisions are thinking. But this is really just to bring to your information that this initiative has come forward. We want to make sure that we're giving all of our students the best opportunity and also make sure that we are not unnecessarily setting any of our employees up to be in violation of school board policy.
I have a couple of comments. As most of you know, I was a classroom teacher for 30 years in another state, but they had almost exactly the same rules. You couldn't tutor your own student, and I would certainly support that wholeheartedly. But I still encourage the teachers, because there's nothing, when you apply for this position to be a tutor, there's nothing that says it's limited to this county. You could be tutoring somebody from Spotsylvania or from halfway across the country in this. So if you're really interested in it and you have time to do it, obviously outside of your school time, I would recommend you apply. And I'm not going to apply, but I thought, obviously, I'm a retired teacher, longtime retired. But actually, the way I read the description, if, technically, I haven't been in the classroom for 28 years, and not even in this state, but if the way I read what they said, as long as I had a good certificate at the time and I retired, I would be eligible for this program. So I'm saying there's a lot of retired teachers that could, might want to take part in this program.
Well, I think, and I agree, Mr. Hopkins, and I know, and we, could you go back to the email, please, Laura? The memo? Can you scroll down? I'm trying to remember. Let me scroll up, maybe. I'm trying to remember maybe where this was. Could you click the attached flyer there for me, please? Actually, you might already have that on here. Can you scroll down? Okay. Yes, there was a part in this that talked a little bit, Mr. Hopkins, about the, who, what type of individual, you know, would be able to apply for this. And you're right, they had a litany of folks. Okay, yeah, so it's actually on the video, we web page. Tutors who are currently licensed in any endorsement area in any, in any state. Teachers who were, right there, Laura, previously licensed in any endorsement area, employed as instructional staff at any accredited private or parochial school, college or university, evidence-based tutoring and learning centers, assistive technology. So there's, you know, they're.
It's pretty wide open.
Right, they're facilitating this and opening the doors wide open to try to get as many qualified people available to help students as possible. So I agree that, and as Ms. Page was saying here, that really the, this program will go as far as the staffing is going to allow it to go and how many people are able to, are able to essentially be recruited or enticed to participate. And so I see this, for our, for our purpose here, it can definitely be a benefit to students. And also, we want to make sure that we do a good job of advertising it to our teachers to let them know that this is an opportunity. But just want to make sure as we go forward and make sure that we make very clear whatever the parameters are going to be. And I think that will be the discussion here with the board, as far as what are, what provisions are we going to establish to make sure that we don't set, we don't want to set somebody up who has good intentions, signing up to be a tutor, to potentially even unknowingly violate school board policy or not meaning to. And so that was just a concern when it came out, and I heard that on a webinar on Friday. The policy immediately clicked in my head that we got to make sure that we do this right before we do a mass rollout, which is why we haven't, you know, sent it to principals, et cetera, yet, because we want to make sure we get this, this, the backend addressed before we put it out for public consumption.
BOD is still working on it.
Yep.
Well, I mean, you count on your tutor student when the student's available, and if they're going to school in the daytime, you can't tutor them in the daytime because they're already in school. I think, I mean, I was 20 years in the music business. And if you wanted to be in an advanced band in some of our high schools, it was required that you had a private tutor. You couldn't get in the, in the organization. So, and in high math, I actually did some tutoring myself of students that were in other schools in advanced math, because a lot of them needed. But it was always done outside of school time and outside of school.
So what we, yes, perfect. So what we will do is, we will seek division council opinions. We'll work with our principals and the cabinet, now that many of them are here tonight, fortunately, and have a little bit of information on it. This is, this is pretty fresh coming out. You saw the date of that. The superintendent's email was, I believe, last Wednesday. I could be wrong, maybe around the 12th, something like that. And so, and we can come back with some potential recommendations for you all, and we can continue to just kick this idea around just to make sure that we have this on the up and up, and then we will take the next step to make sure that our teachers are aware. And then we, now that we have a great platform, we will be able to engage our families as well. And just one last thing before we move to the presentation, the board meeting calendar today. Basically, the first day of summer, and it'd be hard for me to identify the sheer number of teachers that came here today, first day out, working on curriculum work. Every single room in this building was full with teachers and administrators who were here beginning the hard and good work of quality curriculum work and design. And also to Judy and Renee for your leadership and your department and instruction, getting that set up. It was really incredible to see, and I know that's, we're seeing a culture shift, and I know it's anecdotally. But I know last year, these two ladies told me very clearly, it was, it was hard to find people and hard to get people to come out. And this year, we, we maxed out numbers and had to actually let a few know we didn't have enough space. So that when you're trying to build a culture of excellence and getting the buy-in and getting momentum, those type, and sometimes it's very anecdotal what we get qualitative, but that was, it was really great, high spirits, and just worked from beginning to end of day. And we'll be here all week engaged in this work. And so that was really a testament to what we're doing here, and that was really welcome, really welcome to see. So I really appreciate that as well. And finally, now we will come down and we will discuss the 2023, 2024 board meeting calendar. But we will, I think we'll have to start before that, Ms. Byron, with a discussion about June, even though that's technically still this school year. And so I can let you go from here.
Sure. We were discussing, well, let me pull up so we can look at June.
Yeah, we'll start with June.
So in June, we have a meeting on the 5th, which is our regular meeting. And then we have our work session, our regularly scheduled work session on the 26th. However, we have a significant number of administrators who will be attending a conference most of that week. So we were wondering about rescheduling that meeting.
On the 26th, it's the 25th, 26th, 27th, and I think return the 28th.
So for us, meeting content for the next meeting, what do we have, Ms. Byron, left for that meeting? I mean, tonight, I know we had first read for.
That's it.
We have policies for the next meeting.
First reads tonight.
Is there any other business truly that we'll need for that meeting?
The strategic plan, you were talking about bringing that forward.
We will bring forward the strategic plan on June 5th. And then there will be seeking to action on the first read items this evening. And there will likely be a new first read of some additional policies that particular evening. If it's.
We're experiencing a small workload that night other than policies, correct? So why don't we just get rid of the 26th meeting? And if we need to do a call meeting for employees, because I think that the business can wait, correct? If that's what I'm hearing on policies?
Yes, the biggest hangup would be if, if we weren't able to, if we have the flexibility to get a called meeting to address personnel. Somewhere from the, Yvonne, like 19th on somewhere near to address personnel would, would help us tremendously. But outside of that, it's, the work, the workload itself is, is light.
Madam Chairman, I would recommend that we move the meeting to the 19th. And then when we're on the 5th, we'll know more about what we can do.
If we need it, okay.
Right. But so I make a motion that we, for now, we move the school board meeting to the 19th.
Okay.
I might not be available that day.
I will not be available on the 19th.
Okay. So Mike, are you available on the 19th?
I'm available, but the 5th, I will be on the roof.
Okay.
But that, I have to.
So we got two members that are not available on the 19th. So why don't we wait and, because I think we're not going to have any real business. I mean, we'll.
Okay, just let's just not do anything and decide on the 5th.
If, yeah, if we need to just wait and do a special call or something that we, if that's okay with everybody. All right. Thank you.
I'll offer another recommendation in lieu of the 5th with the 12th, just to ensure we have forums and a consolidated work session and meeting.
I will not be here on the 12th. You won't be here? Okay.
No, and what?
Moving the 5th, the meeting, the 5th to the 12th?
Yeah, disregard.
I don't have any problems with the 12th.
I, I can do it.
So you can do the 12th?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Might be better even, even better if we're going to skip the other meeting.
It would still probably, there's still a high probability that it would, that we would still have to have a special called meeting somewhere even after that, so that could add, just based on timelines and where I foresee vacancies.
So you know you can't do the 12th?
I can't do the 12th.
And Mike, you can't do the 5th?
Do the 5th and the 12th. It's a week, a week.
Oh, okay. So I say, let's go with, let's keep it at the 5th, and then we'll decide that night if we need another meeting and if we can just do a call meeting sometime for personnel. Does that work? Sound good? All right. Now, July.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Do you want to go back to your meeting calendar first?
Okay. We'll get that one out of the way. All right.
Okay. So this is the time of year where I just go through and set the actual meeting dates for the upcoming school year. I followed the typical first Monday, last Monday, except for where holidays conflict. So in July, it would drop to July 10th. And then also in July, we suggested moving the work session back to the 24th, just because all teachers come back on the 31st, and that would be a long day for everybody. So we thought, and a busy day, so we thought the 24th would be better for the work session in July. And I don't recall any other unusual.
October was for.
Oh, October. Yes, in October, we suggested moving the work session to the 23rd, because there is a conference that Dr. Hornick will be attending the 29th, 30th, and 31st.
As I know, it sounds good. Looks good.
And so we'll just ask for approval at the June 5th, so you all have time to look at your calendars and everything.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Since we're starting with the new school board calendar, I would like to make a proposal that we begin holding our meetings at the Board of Supervisors Meeting Hall as well. I've talked to two of them, and they both thought it was a great idea that we would be holding our meetings there. I don't think much goes on there, so utilizing that facility for our board meetings as well. I think it's more centrally located too, so.
Thoughts?
The commute would be nicer.
I'm sorry, I'm kind of like old hat. I think if it's school board business, we need to be in our, in our facility. Sorry.
I just think that it's closer for everybody, centrally located. So people that are coming from the other end of the town to come to the board meetings, it would be closer for them. And it's, it's a nicer place, no offense, everybody here, but the tables are a little bit spread out a little bit. And it's, it's a nicer place. No offense, everybody here, but the tables are a little bit spread out a little bit when we're doing this.
I, I, I don't agree that it's a nicer place.
I don't either. Not in that aspect.
Let me tell you why. If you sit on the floor over there and look up at the board members, whichever people are there, you only see them from the neck up. And I don't like it. I've told them they need to put a false floor in there or do something. I mean, just spending two hours seeing people from the neck up is not right for me.
Well, and I also think that we already have our staff here until 7 o'clock. I mean, till 7 to have a meeting and however long. I mean, and then to expect all of the staff to pack up and move too, when we already have him, them here much later.
I don't know that all of the staff is coming directly from this building. I mean, if we're having principals and stuff coming from the other side of town, it's just more conveniently located.
I'm not in favor.
Are we planning to take our meetings back to the schools like we used to do? That's something that COVID took away and I think it should have returned.
Greg, you might want to jump in here. So I personally love the idea and I, I think it, I, I think it, I think it's a really good idea. I know that the hang-up is going to be being able, the, the, the conundrum comes in with the live streaming and having it be a, a really quality experience. I, I personally love the idea and know we could and that, and it was a lot, pre-COVID, a lot more flexibility. Now that we have the equipment, so I think that would be trying, trying to navigate that potential, I think, Greg, I, because I don't know.
I don't have the equipment right now to do that, take it down the road, so to speak. Obviously, the audio is very good in here. We have speakers above, we're going to have that. We have a portable setup. Displays would possibly be an issue too. I'd have to see every location, but that is,
Would you mind taking a look at that this summer and just kind of see what we have and if, if we were going to pursue that angle? Because I, I, I like the idea and always have, but it, it, the reality changed a little bit with COVID live, you know, live streaming, you know, during COVID and then, because the live stream also is a, is a benefit and for transparency and openness with our community as well. And so, but if you, if you wouldn't mind, Greg, maybe just kind of do an inventory of what we might need in order to accomplish that, we can get back as well.
And another thing, you know, we went, we now live stream, so if they, people want to see the meeting or whatever, all they got to do is live stream it from here. And we, you know, we have it at 7, so they have plenty of time to get here. So I'm going to just say right off the top of the bat, I'm not personally a fan of moving it. Now, I do like Mike's idea if it's ever possible to get back into the buildings with the kids and see the kids and stuff, but I'm, I'm not one in favor of, and I, I haven't personally talked to the chairman of the Board of Supervisors or any of them to see if they are truly in with him. I know you said that they are myself. So I'm not in favor. So my vote would be a no.
I just thought it was an appropriate time to bring it up with the board.
And I, I respect that. All right. Anything else? Ms. Byron, back to you.
Okay. So let's see, back to,
June 5th.
If you remember where we were.
Yeah, June 5th agenda.
So just, yeah, we're on the calendars still, the, the, these calendars. We have the V S B A Law Conference on June the 2nd. And I have Mr. Hopkins and Ms. Page and Dr. Hornick attending that. Then we have a retiree brunch on the, we moved the date to the 8th since I printed these, so we do need to change that. So June 8th is when the retiree lunch is here. At 10 o'clock, Yvonne?
Yes. And here?
Here. Mm-hmm. And then moving on to July, of course, we, our offices will be closed on the 3rd and the 4th, so our board meeting's on the 10th. There's also a V S B A Conference on Education on the 13th, so if you'd like to attend, just let me know. The New Teacher Institute is the last week in July when all the new teachers will be here and in their buildings. The work session on the 24th and all teachers return on the 31st of July.
And as we work through and finalize complication for this coming year, we will make sure that you all get an invite to that date and time as well.
And then moving on to the June 5th agenda, I will be updating that to remove most everything except for the policies and the calendar. And we also will have a special public comment that night for ESER 3 Grant and Plan, and then we have regular public comment. And I believe that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Byron. Close session for vacation? Because we had no board reports, correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right.
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene and close meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Divisional Employee as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A 1 of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees.
Thank you. Can I have a second? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Close session. Thank you.